This is the City Council meeting for the city of Sammamish, 6:30 Tuesday, March 24, 2020. And call of order?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
And I also see we have a few staff on the line. We have Chris Jordan, Lita Hatchey, David Pyle, Anjali Meyer, our city attorney Lisa Marshall. I just wanted to ask if there's anybody else who's called in that I didn't name already.
Will the city manager be here?
My apologies. Dave Rudat, interim city manager, is also present.
Oh, excellent.
All right. So I don't know if you have flags in your homes, but councilor, please join me in the pledge.
Where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, that was really horrible. We were not together.
Okay, next I have the approval of the agenda.
I don't know. I'm just kidding.
Okay, I believe I have a approval by Pam and a second by Kristi, is that correct?
I think we both moved it.
It's fine, either way.
Okay.
Okay. And rather than do all those in favor, I'm going to ask for any of those who object. So if any of those object, say nay. Okay, that shows an all in favor. Have a 7-0. Okay, first up is our emergency management. Andrew is here, and he's going to give us an update of what's going on with COVID-19.
Yes, good evening, mayor, councilmember, city manager. My name is Andrew Stevens. I'm the emergency manager for the city of Sammamish with Eastside Fire and Rescue. On March 3, I provided the city council with a preliminary report on the rapidly developing coronavirus or COVID-19 situation. At that time, there were 27 positive cases throughout the state. As of today, the number of positive cases across the state is almost 2,500. For weeks now, the city of Sammamish has been widely promoting and complying with the recommendations of public health agencies to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. The city has implemented a robust telework program, which has allowed for the continuation of nearly all organizational functions while allowing for roughly 85% of city staff to work remotely. Every city department has thoroughly revised a continuity of operations plan, identifying mission essential functions, succession plans, and delegations of authority, which ensures critical government services will continue throughout this pandemic. The city of Sammamish has also developed a COVID-19 information and resource hub for residents. That hub is linked to the top of the city website or available directly by visiting The Connect Sammamish COVID-19 site is the city's central point for sharing information and news related to the pandemic, current public health recommendations, and a host of economic, utility, mental health and wellness, and emergency preparedness resources. Through Connect Sammamish, residents can also ask questions to staff and share stories of community resiliency. Yesterday, the governor issued the Stay Home/Stay Healthy Order, which requires everyone to stay home except when pursuing an essential activity such as shopping for groceries, going to a medical appointment, getting takeout food, food deliveries are also permitted, going to work at an essential business, or going outside for walks and exercise, as long as a minimum of six feet of social distancing is maintained. Grocery stores, pharmacies, gas stations, and other businesses identified as essential services will remain open. However, all gatherings of people for social, spiritual, or recreational purposes are prohibited. This includes playdates for children, dinner parties, going to church, and even funerals. By tomorrow evening, all essential businesses must also close. However, those who can operate remotely may continue to do so. I would like to take a moment now to urge all Sammamish residents to comply with these orders and all other public health recommendations, and to reiterate why their compliance is so critically important. According to the World Health Organization, the speed at which coronavirus is spreading across the globe is accelerating. It took 67 days for the first reported case of COVID-19 to reach 100,000 cases, only 11 days for the second 100,000 cases, four days for the third, and just three days for the number to now rise over 400,000 cases globally. Unless drastic actions are taken to stop the spread of this virus, our medical systems will quickly be overwhelmed. A large percentage of the global population will get sick, and many will die. The exemptions provided under the Stay Home/Stay Healthy Order should not be taken advantage of, and you should not be looking for opportunities to leave your home. Just because a grocery store remains open does not mean that you should be headed to the store daily. If a recipe calls for an ingredient and you don't have it, make do with what you have. Similarly, don't run to a hardware store because you would like to take advantage of home isolation to paint your bathroom. Limit your trips to only those that are critically essential. This is not only to protect yourself and your family from additional opportunities of exposure, but to protect the frontline workers who are keeping those essential services going. And parents, if your children are still gathering socially throughout the city and in neighborhoods, it is time to step up and enforce those regulations at home. The definition of integrity is doing the right thing when no one else is watching, and governments will not be able to regulate away the risk posed by this virus. The importance of whole-community compliance cannot be understated, and that begins with every individual. I urge all residents to support one another through the entirety of this incident, to be a good example, and to not put others at risk. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we have public comment. Per King County recommendations to slow the spread of COVID-19, there will be no in-person public access to public meetings until further notice. Public comment, this is not an opportunity for the public, this is an opportunity for the public to address the council. To submit public comment for this meeting, email to deputy city clerk Lita Hatchey at lhatchey@ssamamish.us and citycouncil@ssamamish.us. Next up, we have the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent calendar?
They'll move it.
And a second?
I think we were going to pull off...
We'll have for discussion?
We're going to pull off the HR amendment?
That's going to come up for discussion?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Okay, and discussion is to pull the number nine, which would be the Employee Handbook Amendment, and move that to, well, it would be number 14, I guess. Is there anything else anybody has for the consent calendar? Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the consent calendar less the number nine? Moved to number four?
You have a motion already?
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of accepting the consent calendar with the changes, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Excellent, 7-0. Okay, that takes us to number 14, which is the Employee Handbook Amendment.
Number nine.
Yeah, well, we moved it to number 14. Okay, so I'm going to turn that over to our interim city manager and have some discussion. Who do you want to lead that?
I'll take it up. Mayor, and members of council. The item before you was discussed when we, as staff, determined that we may need a safety net for our employees, those employees who are new to the organization and did not have an adequate amount of time accrued to follow under the normal sick leave before the State Family Leave Act kicked in, and then some employees that may be in a situation where they've been caring for a loved one unrelated to COVID-19, and they've had to use up their time. So we felt it was appropriate to have a safety net. The mechanism we came up with that is to make an amendment to the Employee Handbook for your consideration. So just let me read a quick comment, and then I'll comment further on the presidential order that came up subsequent to our drafting this amendment. The city's greatest asset is our employees. To support our employees during times of emergency, the city has developed the proposed policy shown below for advancing sick leave to those in need. Under this policy, if financial hardships are created by a citywide proclamation of an emergency, the city manager will have the ability to approve, on a case-by-case basis, advanced sick leave to alleviate financial hardships for city employees. Let me read the section that we propose to have added to the Employee Handbook. This would be a new Section 8.3.7, Emergency Sick Leave. The city manager's issuance of a proclamation of an emergency pursuant to R C W 38.52.070 shall authorize the city manager to advance sick leave to employees in his or her discretion as appropriate under that emergency. The provision by the city manager to advance sick leave shall not be considered a prohibited gift of funds or extended of, or an extension of credit under Section 8 of the Washington State Constitution, but shall be considered part of the emergency powers delegated to the city manager pursuant to Chapters 38.52. What we had to consider here was this issue of a grant of public funds, and we wanted to have the council weigh in on this before we, in fact, had said emergency. We have a couple of situations where we've got some new employees that have been with the city, perhaps just maybe a month or so, have not much accrued time, and, like all of us, are subject to the downside effects of COVID-19. And we have another employee who has had to use it a lot of time to take care of a loved one unrelated to COVID-19. Any other comments that you'd like to add, Mary Beth, in regards to this? Okay, Mary Beth felt that I had covered it, so if the council has any thoughts, comments, amendments, modifications to, know that we were trying to think in the best interest of our employees so that there was a safety net. So subsequent to, just following our agendizing this agenda bill, the president came out with a directive regarding sick leave benefits under COVID-19, and that had two parts. One was called Emergency Family Leave, wherein the employer was responsible for 12 weeks of leave related to COVID-19, and there were some parameters there, much like the state family leave, but relevant to COVID-19. That portion of it, though, the emergency family leave, left a two-week gap before the benefits kicked in, at a 2/3 the salary with a maximum cap for that employee. Then the second part was Emergency Sick Leave, and that allowed for up to 80 hours of sick leave if it was related to COVID-19. That is, the employee contracted it or was taking care of a loved one who had contracted it. And those two items there sort of supers, it seemed to us supersede the need for this item. And so we contemplated, should we pull it or, and let the presidential directive stand? And we really felt that the council may want to consider this as a permanent amendment to the handbook because another emergency may be declared that is not COVID-19, and the subject matter still seemed to be relevant, and we thought it right for the council to consider it. We had it agendized, and we asked for your consideration to make it or a modification thereof a permanent part of the Employee Handbook. Finished with my public comment at the moment.
Okay, councilor, so I just wanted to add for everybody to think about as well is one of the things that I had asked city manager to look into was the idea of administrative leave to fill in the possible gap that was going to be coming in with the orders from the presidential policy and what was happening so that we could try to fit the needs of all the employees that we had. So I see that we have some comments first, then I can go back and hit that. So councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I love the idea of us being able to provide this leave. I think it's critical, and I like the idea of updating the handbook. I would suggest that we modify the wording a bit, just to say that the, that leave would be granted to any employee that needed it, and we can put whatever parameters we need there, anything that's relating to whatever the stated emergency is. My concern about the way it's worded is it makes it at the discretion of the city manager, and if for some reason it was rejected, it wouldn't be clear to anybody, you know, what the approval versus not approval would be. And I just felt like we could clarify that language that basically says anything relating to the emergency can be approved, and then if we need to put a limit on the amount of time, we could certainly add that in there or something to that effect. But I think it would be better if we clarified it so it doesn't seem arbitrary to anyone, just because if we're going to modify the handbook, it would be for any city manager in any situation, and I think we could be more clear.
Okay, anybody else have any other comments?
Would we need to, Karen, would we want to modify it to say sick or administrative leave, or do they have to be separate things?
Mayor, if I might, they are two separate things. If you wanted me to comment a little bit more on the admin leave, if I may, mayor.
Correct, please do.
What I noticed, there were some cities here in Washington, and one that I was particularly familiar with in California that had granted, early on in this crisis, three weeks of admin leave to all of their employees because they didn't know what was going to befall the organization. And it had a few more people than what the city of Sammamish has, and they contemplated that they could quickly have to shut down portions of city government and leave people with no employment, and sick leave didn't apply, long-term family leave didn't apply. So they decided to take an action of granting administrative leave. That leaves it unequivocal, that is, the organization takes responsibility for the full pay and payment of benefits to those employees. So I looked at the ordinance that they had drafted. They drafted it in combination with their emergency ordinance, so I extracted this portion of it. And mayor, if I could, I'll read from what I drafted of that, because none of you have this. I just got a few minutes to finally finish it off, so excuse me for not being able to get it solicited out there, but you can get the general feel for it. I wrote it like a resolution, so forgive the whereas', but that's the way I wrote it. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has an increasing and alarming impact on the city of Sammamish civic operations, and whereas the city of Sammamish has a highly flexible and resilient workforce that has adapted itself to the ever-increasing challenges of this pandemic environment, and whereas this resilient workforce may become more impacted than it can otherwise cope with, given the limited human resources available to accomplish its tasks due to ever-increasing work restrictions placed on it by the state and county officials, and whereas the pandemic's reach has the potential to devastate an otherwise healthy and productive workforce we know as the employees of the city of Sammamish. We therefore, as the council of the city of Sammamish, direct the city manager to implement this granting of blank hours or weeks of administrative leave for all full-time employees and an equivalent ratio for part-time employees to be placed into a leave bank for their use if we have a reduction in workforce and other loss of work related to COVID-19 pandemic. This blank number of hours of administrative leave is available to employees who are unable to report to work because of office closure, lack of childcare, illness, or quarantine of themselves or a family member, or the lack of work. Employees working a modified schedule will also be able to use this time to supplement unassigned work time. Any time pre-approved to work from home would be considered work time and not deducted from their administrative leave bank. Any unused administrative leave time remaining, once the restrictions related to COVID-19 are lifted per ends as determined by the city manager, would be moved to an administrative leave bank for the employee to use in the next two years. This time would not have any, this time would not have any cash value, would not be eligible to be cashed out at termination. The amount of administrative leave granted may be increased with the approval of the city council if the county or shelter-in-place directive, I just typed that because that's what they had, is extended or other circumstances apply at the full discretion of the city council. The city manager may adopt additional regulations to implement this administrative leave benefit. So you can see, it's clearly different than sick leave or other leave, and it would be something that would be granted by the council, placed into a bank, and we would work through finance and payroll to monitor that. What leaves, what leaves, or any other... I will, and I'll turn off my mic.
Did you catch any of that last part? Sorry. If you could repeat that, Dave, I'm sorry. There's background noise.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pam. The last part being, when do you think it broke off?
I think you were kind of just talking a little bit about, just that administratively was more flexible, and then I think you were talking about next steps, but I don't know exactly what you were saying. Some loud background.
Okay. I'm sorry, I think I was just trying to clarify that administrative leave is separate than any sort of sick leave, workers' compensation leave, anything like that. Admin leave denotes that the employee is getting the full salary and benefits that they would normally be entitled to. We might have a circumstance here that, you know, we have been working very closely with our workforce. We have some folks who have normally worked in the field. They are working from home, catching up on a lot of training that they can do online or through the use of computers. We might have two, three, four weeks of that time. At some point in time, this emergency is going to continue, and we don't know how we would be able to cope with the lack of work. And thinking along those lines, it might be appropriate for there to be a safety net for the employees. Or we have enough work for some to work four hours a day, but not eight hours a day, and they could use this bank to help supplement their workday so that they get a full salary. And we would report back often to the council as to how this program is working, should it be implemented.
So is this something we need to get reviewed by legal, or can we move on this tonight?
Hi, this is your city attorney. Can I make one comment? I think the policy is a great one. It's really well-written, and I think it'll fill in some really important, you know, gaps. The one thing I would add is that you may consider adding a sentence within that leave that distinguishes the administrative leave that Dave is referring to during COVID-19 or another emergency from Section 8.6 in the Employee Handbook. Currently, 8.6 Paid Administrative Leave reads, "The city may use paid administrative leave while conducting an investigation into an alleged wrongdoing by an employee. This leave may be used when it's necessary or helpful to remove the employee from the workplace pending the outcome of an investigation." I think the way around that is for the administrative leave policy that was just read to you to contain the sentence that says this should not be confused with 8.6 Paid Administrative Leave for purposes of investigation or discipline. That one sentence, I think, clears it up.
I think that is excellent guidance.
And I can help you. If this motion passes, I think it would be pretty easy to just add that sentence after the meeting, Dave. But I'd like to...
Okay, so I have, first I have another comment, and it's a number that I don't have in my phone. So somebody wanted to comment, it's coming from a 206 number. So is there another member who wanted to comment?
I think that's me, Karen. This is Ken talking.
Oh, okay. Councilmember?
Gamblin.
Gamblin, okay.
There you go. Thank you. Hey, for the city manager question, I know there's some discussion right now on the state and federal level, also coming in and providing assistance to workers in all different levels. Do we know whether or not this would be in conflict or in addition, or if those other entities come through with the ability to be assisting these same or same city employees? Is this something that would be in addition to that or that would operate separately from that? I don't know what you know about that and what you don't. I've heard a little bit that city employees may not be eligible for these programs, but possibly we should save something in this. I think we definitely want to do this for our, for our people, but we may want to address that there may be other options that arise as this goes forward, and we want to be able to obviously modify this based on what else is available. That's all. Thank you. Dave, this is...
Okay. Is there another council member that wanted to speak?
Yeah, just for clarification, this is Chris. The, yes, the emergency sick leave is an early utilization of future accruals, so eventually over time, as accruals occur, then that advance gets effectively paid off. It's not an additional compensation. Is that, is that the way to distinguish that from administratively? Administrative leave is more a filler of when there's no work available to accrue hours up to the full-time hours. They're using this as a bridge. And then the reason I ask that question is specifically in your Section 8.3.7, you specifically talk about the sick, emergency sick leaves shall not be considered prohibited gift of funds. And so then I would think the latter, administrative leave, is more of an additional benefit, and I'm certain that appropriate, but I just, I'm curious why you even threw in the prohibited gift of funds in the Section 8.3.7.
We threw in the, would not be a gift of public funds because if the council granted it, it would be a benefit. If the city manager granted it, it would have some cloud on it, although this is an emergency, we're under a proclamation of an emergency, and I could have brought it for council... have brought it for council ratification, we thought it much cleaner just to bring it forward at the time being and put that clarifying language in there, that the manager granting it, it's been blessed by the council. Lisa, thoughts?
Yeah. Yeah, I do have a couple comments. My understanding is the provision of additional sick leave by the manager that's discussed in your agenda bill would be a bank. So in other words, it would be an additional benefit granted by the city manager, and the employee would not be required to pay it off. A similar scenario is when a director, usually a higher-ranking manager, comes to Samamish from another city. The employee negotiates a contract, excuse me, negotiates a bank of vacation that is already there on the first day of that employee's employment, and that employee then accrues another 12 or 13 hours a month, as if that bank is not there. So in order to get around the gifting public funds issue, the prevailing wisdom among employment law experts was to make it a policy. Subsequent to drafting this agenda bill, however, Bob Ferguson issued a memo that indicated that in a case of a public emergency, the gift of public funds prohibition is a very high bar, and that as long as the gift, quote-unquote "gift," is given in order to preserve the public health, safety, and welfare, that that would be an adequate rebuttal to a gift of public funds challenge. So that's the reason that the terminology is used, and putting it in the employee handbook created a policy that we can rely on.
I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution or the policy for the administrative leave, so that employees are covered, whether it be a stopgap measure to get to the extended sick leave, or whether it be to assist if there was not enough work available if this crisis goes on long enough. So I would like to make that motion.
Okay. Okay, I heard a motion added. Jason, was that you that seconded?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, can I get a clarification, Pam? Is that for two weeks? Is that for three weeks?
I believe it was, I had understood that to be a bank for employees to pull from as needed. Was that not correct, David?
No, that's correct, but it was, it said two weeks or three weeks.
Oh, then I say three, because I think this is going to go for a while, so.
And Jason, you still second?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Is this tied to COVID-19?
Yes, and have it tied to COVID-19? Yes.
Yes, it's tied to the emergency.
Yes. Okay. And discussion, and I'm looking at my phone to see if anybody's, anybody have comments or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I just have one question. I have one question, Mayor, and that would be for the city manager, which is, if we do the administrative leave, do you feel that we need any additional sick leave provision in the handbook at this time?
It's, I could say no. I just, I think the provision that we put in there is applicable for some emergency in the future. I think it's beneficial to be able to have the tool.
Okay.
A question of clarification, please, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Treen.
Thank you. So this is for the city manager. Dave, so really, in a sense, you're, well, are you asking us for both tools? The emergency sick leave as one tool and this administrative leave as a second tool?
Yes, pending, or it was really pending how the dialogue went tonight, but considering the robust dialogue that we've had, the guidance from legal counsel, I think your approval of both items for your employees is timely and appropriate.
Second question, on the emergency sick leave, I imagine that's a benefit to us on a tax basis. Whereas the, so my question really, actually, I know that's true, but the other would be the administrative, the administrative one is a little, seems a little, to me, a little more risky, or a larger cost to the city. Would you agree that that would be a?
Is the question, is there a tax benefit to the city for that?
On the question?
Yes, and/or that it's going to just cost us a heck of a lot of money.
Yes.
The administrative leave is going to cost the city money.
Yes, it will. It's, it is something for everyone, and so absolutely in real dollars, it's for everyone. The sick leave is a bridge for select individuals who qualify.
Correct. Right.
Yes. Significantly more dollars applied.
Yeah.
It's like giving everybody additional vacation time, except as, if you adopt it, as I read it, and I'll provide this, all this in a better writing with Lisa's input for you all tomorrow, it has, it has some limitations in its immediate use, long-term. It's a benefit that accrues to everyone.
Correct.
Ultimately, it goes into a bank of leave.
Okay, yeah, that was going to be my next.
I'm sorry.
So my next question, yeah, I'm sorry, too. My next question then would be, was that the administrative leave is going into a bank, and so as, let's say, a planner, for just an example, is not have work to do, he would be able to access that?
Correct. Correct. He would be able, he or she would be able to access that money to supplement their, say if they were on a 40-hour week, and there was enough work for 27 hours, that they could draw 13 hours of that bank so that they had a full week of compensation. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, then I have Councilmember Gamblin, followed by Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. City manager, on the financial impact here for this agenda bill, the statement is advanced sick leave would be paid from multiple funds, such as general fund, street fund, storm fund, and technology fund. Would it be possible to get us some rough budget numbers on what we're talking about? Are we talking about $100,000 a week? Are we talking about $1 million over a month? I have absolutely no idea what the financial impact on this presently and ongoing would be, let's say, if you stretch this out over 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. Obviously, I think this is a benefit to our employees, and we want to help. I feel a little awkward voting on something that I have no idea the financial impact or what kind of dollars we're talking about. Thank you.
Councilman, I understand completely. I wasn't sure where this would go, and we've not crunched any numbers. It would be a lot of money. But I will work with the finance director tomorrow, and we will get a general number to all of you. You know, and that is, that is a question. You are going forward, not knowing the financial impact. You could decide to wait till you have that number, however you want to proceed. We will quantify that. Those funds were identified because some employees may be paid out of different funds because of their job duties, the way the department is set up, because we work on fund accounting methodologies. That's why they were listed, so it's not just a total general fund hit. But we have to go back and look at those numbers, and I'm not sure how the formulas are set up for the city and how quickly we can do that, but I imagine we can get it to you within a day, day and a half.
Okay. And Dave, one last question to follow up. Waiting for those numbers, if we chose to wait on voting on this until we had some budgetary numbers in front of us, would there be any negative financial impacts on any of the staff if this was not implemented this evening?
No, I don't believe there would be, because we have, your staff leadership has been working very hard to be very innovative, creative, and the workforce has been very flexible in trying to keep everyone working and busy on relevant things. So there is no impending crisis over the next couple of weeks if it waited until April 7th.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. And again, I fully support doing something like this. I just, you know, as a council member, I feel kind of hanging out there, voting on something that I have absolutely no budget numbers on at all.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Ross, and then Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question. I think I would echo Councilmember Gamblin's sentiments there, but what I missed was what the motion was. My phone literally cut out, and I didn't hear anything, so I don't even know what the motion on the floor is.
I made the motion to approve the resolution as read by the interim city manager and modified by the city attorney. So it was for the three weeks of administrative leave into a pool for employees.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, did you have any other questions?
Nope, just wanted to know what the motion was.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, Dave, I wanted to go back. You said it's going to cost a lot, and the reason I, I'm sitting here thinking, you mentioned funds, so putting fund alignment aside, and just looking at total cash flow or cash for the city, if you're sick and you get paid for sick, or you're out on admin and get paid for admin, you alternatively would be paid regular wages. So from my perspective, other than jobs that produce revenue, such as permitting, it almost sounds like cash flow neutral from that perspective. It just happens to be less productive, meaning folks are not doing what they normally do during regular hours. But from a total cash flow to the city, I just want to make that clear. Am I, am I looking at it incorrectly? And when you say lots, is that lots of additional cost? Or are you, where are you driving that number? Maybe that's where we need to look at the numbers. I'm somewhat confused on how you write that conclusion.
Yes, a lot, the word "a lot" is a rather ambiguous term, especially when you're talking dollars and cents. You know, your analogy, I think, is on point. We would be paying it out in most cases for a loss of work. We might be paying it out in some cases where we haven't encountered it yet, but where someone has come down with COVID-19, or they're, and they're quarantined, or their loved one is quarantined, has the COVID-19, and so therefore, they're isolated at home. And in those cases, if they're well, they might be able to work at home. So it could be a combination, but we don't have enough work. Is cost-neutral from one aspect, because, say, we're just not being as productive because we don't have the work for them, but be clear, it is an additional liability that the city is taking on, because it's just like the word vacation time. They get paid for not being here. They would get paid for not being here, for not being productive, in most cases because they are sick related to COVID-19, their significant other or family member who lives with them, or their child. So it's related to the virus. But in the end, let's say you have 75% of the workforce uses all of their time, and the virus starts to diminish, and we start coming out of this scourge, there are some people who will still have some in their leave bank. And the way I read this, as that other agency used, it would then be able to be used over the course of the next two years as a residual benefit. But if, they wouldn't get anything if they terminated, and they can't cash it out, but it would be still a benefit on the books. So it is an additional liability. Does that, does that make sense?
Well, it's an additional benefit, and by paying benefit for nonproductive time, you lost productivity for the same overall cost. And I guess, two years after the virus crisis has ended, I'm curious why we extend it for two years after the crisis, if it's only intended for the current emergency.
Okay, I'll share the rationale that that agency used, and it's one I'm familiar with, from the practicality that admin leave, oftentimes, the administration has more control over that, and you, you may have to monitor the amount of time off that somebody can actually take, so that the organization's mission is not compromised by the use of the balance of that benefit. Does that make sense to you? Do I need to?
Well, actually, I think the intent, from my perspective, is to make sure we don't, none of our employees are hurt from an 80-hour biweekly paycheck, and the intent is not to extend additional benefits on top of that. So I guess what I'm, I'm just curious why, you know, why we're extending that additional liability, as you put it, if it's, is not necessary to accommodate the emergency in their personal or family situation. And all for this, absolutely, we're all for this, I'm sure. It just, it just gets confusing in the way it's being presented, which comes back to, we want to make them whole. We don't want them to suffer financially, and that's the objective, and that's my objective.
Okay, if I could comment further, then. I took this from another agency. I'm not sure why they did it, other than what was given to me in some verbal feedback, is they, they wanted them to continue to have it, and they wanted to be sure to control it. But you certainly have the parameters. I mean, we are, we are inventing things here, so that you could say that the time of use is shortened. There isn't anything from you crafting this to be a little bit more of what will work better for Samamish.
I think what I'm getting at is up to three weeks versus, it sounds like you're saying got three weeks, and then you can use it up in a period of time. If they use one week, they use one week if it helps them bridge this crisis. If they need two weeks, they get two weeks. If they need three weeks, they get three weeks, up to three weeks. I think that's what I'm driving at, from a policy standpoint.
Okay, then, Mayor, if I could clarify? That's a good distinction, because the way I, this was drafted and the way I read it, it was the granting of a full benefit to everyone. The council certainly could look at it as, we'll grant up to, that would require you to modify the motion or change it, because it is distinctly two different operations of this benefit.
Now, I guess I'm just asking the question. I'm not, I don't want to, I'm just trying to understand policy, what we're getting at, and, you know, if we have, if we have to provide additional benefit during this crisis, I'm not, I'm not going to be screwed on that. I just want to understand. I, I just want to understand it. I really care about the employees, and I want them to be fully covered and compensated.
Okay, I'm going to make, well, actually, we've got one more, because we've got Councilmember Ritchie, and then I wanted to comment as well. So Councilmember Ritchie?
Thank you, I'll be quick. Where's my Wordpad? There we go. So this is based upon my experience in HR, that the most expensive thing an organization can do is hire and train new staff, and I support this motion, because it helps preserve the staff we have in a time of crisis, and it gives the city manager more tools in the toolbox to be able to do that. I don't think we can know within reason how much this would cost, or how much these leaves would be used or needed. What I do support in passing this motion is to ask the city manager to update the council at each meeting, or every other meeting, or as needed, so that the council can provide, we can get information to track ongoing costs and usage as that becomes needed. I mean, I think at the end of the day here, we're just trying to make sure we're doing what we can to preserve staff in a difficult time. It may not be used at all. It may be something that's needed. We're trying to act to preserve staff, and I just think it makes sense to provide that extra tool for the city manager and to the staff to be able to utilize. Having said that, I do think more information is needed, more to Councilmember Gamblin's point, that because we don't know, I don't think you can know, again, from my HR experience, how these things will be used. I do think it's going to be significant, potentially. I hope not, certainly, but I think it makes sense to employ it, plug it in, and then when it is utilized, if it's utilized, to ask the city manager to update us, so that we can make sure it makes ongoing sense for the city to utilize this tool from a fiscal standpoint going forward. Thank you.
Okay, and then I just wanted to make the comment that whether it be 12 months, or 24 months, or whatever afterwards, I think one of the things that we can't put a timetable on right now is the long-term effects that this virus could have on the system, on the body. We don't know what this virus is going to do if somebody has this virus today, and they're going to recover tomorrow, or two weeks from now. We don't know what those long-term effects could be on the system, and they could end up sick again, or an effect from this six months from now, nine months from now, they could end up needing, you know, some sort of breathing therapies or something. We don't know that. And so that would be one of the reasons that I would think we would want to keep that bank open, because they may need extra days during that timeframe to come back, and need to have some of those days available if they need to come back and use them. So I would, I would ask that we keep that in mind, because I think, just because somebody is well, does not necessarily mean that they're not going to need time to, whether it be the mom or the dad or the child, does not mean that they are done necessarily with this virus. That being said, we do have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Do I have any other discussion? Okay. Christie's stuff is working again. Okay. All right, so I'm going to go, doesn't matter with this one, I'm going to go with, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed? Do I hear any opposed?
I heard a dog.
Murphy opposed.
That, Chris.
Okay, do I have, have any council members opposed? Okay, then I will ask that the interim city manager, please get back to us with the wording and numbers and stuff, so that we can have that information available to everybody.
Mayor, I will do that as soon as possible.
Excellent. Okay, we are at 7:26. Okay, you guys, we're going to have to extend probably by 10 minutes. Do I have a motion for extending the meeting for 10 minutes?
I'll move.
I'll move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, okay. Moving quickly, then, to the next thing up is the discussion of the AWC, and then I'm going to turn over to Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Mike Suggs, Senior Management Analyst. The purpose of this agenda item is to gauge whether there are any council members interested in serving on the AWC Large City Advisory Committee. The purpose of the committee is detailed further in your agenda bill, but it involves input on AWC's legislative priorities and coordination on the issues and needs of interest to large cities. There are 11 seats on the committee, but only six are available for cities in our population category of 50,000 to 100,000. It requires a two-year term and meets at least twice per year, and the deadline to apply is March 31st. The link to the application is included in your PAC materials tonight. It is a very simple application. So with that, unless there are any questions, I will go ahead and turn it over to the mayor for discussion.
Okay, well, I'm going to throw out there right away that I am interested in this. Is there anybody else who's interested in this?
I am, Mayor, as well.
Okay, so we have two interested. Is anybody else interested in this? Okay, so discussion.
I will, I will, if you, if you're interested, Mayor, I will allow you to go forward, if that, if that's what you would like to do.
Well, thank you, thank you, councilmember. That's, thank you. Okay, so moving forward, then, I will, we'll see how it goes. I'll get the, I'll work with Mike, I'll get that in, and we'll see if we can get somebody on this committee. Did I hear, did I hear, did I miss something?
I just said thank you for being willing to do that.
Well, thank you as well. I know everybody's getting inundated with committees these days. Okay, so the last thing we have is council reports. Does anybody have anything they need to report?
No.
I had a verbal update I wanted to provide, that I did speak with the folks over at Republic Services, and that they are doing a great job of keeping, keeping our service up, which is an important aspect of keeping everybody safe by having our garbage collected. But I think folks should note that no extra bags, everything has to be in cans right now, so we can help protect the?
The drivers.
Yep. So I just wanted to give a call out, not just to Republic Services, but obviously to all of our supporting agencies, who have continued to serve our community, and putting their, you know, best foot forward and trying to keep their workers safe while they serve us, so. But I did want people to know, we are continuing to get our garbage picked up, which I, for anyone who's lived anywhere where there's been a garbage strike, it's a big deal.
It is, it is. I had a discussion with Russell Joe this week as well, and I'm very thankful that they are doing that. Because that could be a whole nother health problem. Okay, I wanted to report that I did have a meeting today, a virtual meeting today on the census, stuff that's supposed to be happening. A lot of it is happening, but there's a number of pockets of people that were really, that have to go door-to-door and meet with, that just cannot take place right now. So we're trying to find different ways of how to deal with that, and a lot of that's going to depend on whether or not we have events this summer, and whether we have, you know, whether if we have the Fourth of July event, and we can have a kiosk there, or what we're going to do. So anyway, we're going to have a lot more meetings virtually, and we'll, I'll try to keep you posted on more ideas that we come up with. Anybody else have any more updates? Okay.
Move to adjourn.
We've got the, we have got the city managers' report.
Oh, sorry. I'll rescind my motion.
Please, just a moment to pontificate.
Thank you, Dave.
Mayor, members of council, I wanted to report out to you and the community tonight on a number of items, most specifically about the governor's Stay Home, Stay Healthy Directive to all persons residing and working in the state of Washington, and the impacts to the city of Sammamish operations, and how that might impact our community. First, as mentioned earlier by our emergency manager, Andrew Stevens, the directive was made in large part because many people were ignoring the previous health directives from the state health officer not to gather, together, and to keep a six-foot recommended social distancing separations. This directive enforces that and so much more. The governor is urging everyone to reduce their exposure and to help slow the spread so that we will all continue to, so that we will all contribute to impacts and spread of this coronavirus. You can't see it, you can't smell it, and you can't taste it, but it's hunting for you, and it will find you very, very soon. Second, most operations in the city of Sammamish staff is being, is business as usual, because we have been shifting our workforce to remote teleworking for the past few weeks. Over 85% of our staff is working remotely, and that is increasing as we get even more of our operations and processing migrated to online technology. It certainly has been challenging, and I know it's been frustrating and a big adjustment to our public as well. We are trying very hard to continue to serve our community, but please bear in mind, we are significantly altering, altering the way we do business, so that we can continue to do business and be safe for all parties involved. Our Department of Community Development has made great strides to process plan checks and permitting. The latest efforts are those of our building inspectors to do remote viewing and utilize technology more, so we can complete inspections and keep our personnel safe. The latest directive has us revisiting access to our parks and trails. We just restricted access to play equipment and places children and teens were gathering to meet the governor's and the health officials' goals of limiting gathering of people and safe health practices. We are keeping the parks open for now, so people can use common sense, keep wide-open social distancing, and still get fresh air and exercise. We are closing the parks to vehicles by keeping the gates locked. Emergency vehicles have keys for access, but we don't want carloads of people traveling to our parks, as it defeats the governor's goals. We will keep our restrooms open for now, and they will be serviced by our contractors. But be wise, and bring handy wipes or other items, so that you can insulate yourself from the door hardware. The trails will be open as well, so you can exercise there. We will service the dog waste bins, so we don't have a health hazard develop. We will still do our landscape maintenance, as the city has made a sizable investment in our properties for the public benefit, and we don't want to lose that. This effort is also directly permissible under the governor's directives for businesses to maintain their plant and equipment, even though that business may not be essential. Our limited-size street and parks crews have specific assignments, and our project managers in public works will be doing their inspections of road projects, which will continue as those projects are being taken on in the best interest and the safety of the community. I wanted to note that while the city council has taken steps to comply with the Open Meeting Act by allowing the public, up to 10 persons, including to, to meet here and monitor the meeting, and to gather in the lobby area as visual witnesses to a council meeting, that privilege has been suspended, because the governor's order supersedes the Open Meeting Act and the opinion of the Attorney General on the issue of allowing public attendance. We will comply with the governor's order until further notice. On a final note, Sammamish is operating at close to full capacity to serve the public as it has been given these challenges and in coping with this pandemic. Please, for the sake and the safety of your families and friends, stay at home, do as much as you can to slow the spread. Thank you.
Okay, councilmembers, any, anything else for the good of the order?
No, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that. That was important.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Be safe, everyone.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.